Hello and welcome on behalf of the Oceanside Public Library to the Oceanside City Council Candidates Forum for Districts 3 and 4. I'm Monica Chapodomark, Principal Librarian of Adult Services here at the library, and we're so pleased to be hosting this forum as we know it expands the library's mission to engage, inform, connect, and inspire. Civic engagement and democracy is one of the values the library upholds. We've asked the North County San Diego League of Women Voters to help us with this forum because of their track record for clear and nonpartisan work. So now I'll turn the forum over to tonight's moderator, Elizabeth Brady.
Thank you, Monica, and welcome everyone tonight who's watching. What you see before you tonight are the candidates for Oceanside City Council, Districts 3 and 4. They're going to be elected to a four-year term if they earn the most votes from you. This year completes the transition to a four-district representative and a mayor-at-large model for Oceanside. As mentioned, I'm Elizabeth Brady and I'm with the League of Women Voters of North County San Diego. The League of Women Voters is celebrating our 100th anniversary this year. We were formed shortly after the passage of the 19th Amendment to encourage informed voting and active participation in government. As the educational arm of the League, we do not endorse or oppose candidates or political parties. Our goal is to help voters be informed. How you vote is up to you and you alone. Another great resource, particularly around things like the ballot propositions and measures you can use, will be VotersEdge.org. We're so happy to have the Oceanside Public Library as our co-sponsors tonight. We're really grateful for all the work they did to make this forum happen. Let me tell you a little bit about the format we're going to use tonight. The candidates have all agreed to this in advance. Microphones are going to be muted for everyone except for the candidates and myself. We're not going to be using chat or the question features in Zoom. The questions for this forum have already been submitted in advance by the community. Two experienced and conscientious League members have acted as question orders, Ronnie C. and Jackie Stone. They've screened the questions really just to avoid duplicates, take out things that aren't relevant to this election, and to make sure that the topics that come up repeatedly in the questions do get addressed tonight because we only have an hour to do questions. As a reminder, in accordance with the FCC regulations, this forum cannot be edited and must be shown in its entirety. So the ground rules. Let's go over a couple of things. Each candidate is going to get one minute for opening remarks. The speaking order has been randomly assigned. Generally, there's going to be one minute to answer questions, but as the moderator, I reserve the right to throw in some yes or no, short-answer questions, or maybe even a longer answer if there's something really complicated that gets asked. To make it a little easier for the audience tonight, although we're going to vary the order in which candidates answer questions, we're going to make sure that the districts stay together. So one question will go to District 3 candidates and another question to District 4 candidates, but we'll mix it up in between. The League of Women Voters has also provided us with a timekeeper tonight to keep us on track. She'll be visible to the candidates, but not to those watching the tape. So I'm going to turn it over to Karen Pendergast right now, just to demonstrate how she's going to help keep you on track.
Hi, this is Karen Pendergast. Welcome, candidates. I'm going to be the timer. I'm with the League of Women Voters. And when your time gets down to 30 seconds, I'll be putting up this sign. And then when the time is out and it's time for you to stop talking, I will put this one up. Thank you.
Thank you, Karen. All right, let's begin. We'll start with the one-minute opening statements. Candidate Newman. Amber, I'm going to ask you to unmute.
Sorry about that. Hi, my name is Amber Newman. Obviously, I'm running for Oceanside City Council, District 3. I've lived in Fire Mountain for 15 years and counting. I'm a mother, I'm a local business operator, and I'm an engaged community advocate that is involved in a variety of local organizations. I sit on the board of the Oceanside Cultural Arts Foundation. I'm a member of the Oceanside Charitable Foundation, and I volunteer on their membership committee. I fundraise and advocate for the North County LGBTQ Resource Center, as well as regularly sponsor events at the Oceanside Museum of Art, Oceanside's MLK Scholarship Fund, and more. I have championed safe access to cannabis for patients in need that has brought at least the beginning of a new industry to Oceanside that will provide desperately needed jobs and revenue to our community. I am running to restore voice to all Oceanside residents, particularly our working families who are most impacted by the decisions made at City Hall. For too long, our voices have been silenced to appease the personal agendas of council members, and that practice needs to stop. Because of that, I am asking for your support on November 3rd. Thank you for your time. I hope you learned something tonight.
Thank you. Candidate Bachelor.
Good evening. I'm Bill Bachelor. I have been a resident of Oceanside for 30 years. I am running only because I have a deep love of this town. I have been a longtime advocate for senior services and instrumental in some other things within the city. But this is the first time I've decided to actually run formally and officially for office. So I'm hoping to gain your support, and I don't really even have a whole minute to fill. So I'm Bill Bachelor. Most of you know me by now. And I look forward to finishing up this election with a good run. Thanks so much.
Thank you. Candidate Davis.
Hi, and first thank you to the Oceanside Public Library and the Women League of Voters. I moved here in 2014 after meeting a tall, dark, and handsome man who's an Air Force veteran, Department of Justice retiree, longtime resident. And most immediately, I put money in the city's pockets by producing an award-winning short film here at Oceanside, Between Ships. I was asked immediately to join the OCAF Cultural Arts Foundation Board where I served as outreach coordinator. And I volunteered initially at KOCT, which I was later hired as our local nonprofit television station where I've been working the last five years as a producer there. You may also see me behind the scenes where I've done Success Week, I've done the parade. I've done a number of things. And I'm running for the Oceanside City Council to bring more social equity on the council. And I'm asking for your vote to bring a broader perspective on this council. So let's imagine a brighter future together, and thank you.
Thank you. Candidate Macken.
Hi, my name is Sherry Macken. I've lived in Oceanside for 40 years. I'm a mom, grandmother, and retired Oceanside teacher. I'm also former deputy mayor and served as Oceanside's representative on both Sandag and NCTD. I have excellent relationships with the Coastal Commission, the Coastal Conservancy, and Caltrans, agencies that have so much control over what we can and cannot do. I am your neighborhood candidate, and my focus is on you and our neighborhoods. Reducing traffic congestion, getting tech jobs in Oceanside, enhancing our beaches and parks like El Corazon, and supporting small business. I have a proven track record for getting things done. The water at Buccaneer Beach is clean because I went to Sacramento and brought home over 7.3 million in state grant funding for the UV system to clean up the creek discharge. Cassidy Street off-ramp and transition ramps were a mess. I worked with Caltrans to move the resurfacing of the ramps into the 2019 budget. I've always put Oceanside first, and I get results. I would appreciate your vote. Thank you.
Thank you. Candidate Keim.
Hi, I'm Councilmember Ryan Keim. I was appointed unanimously to council last year, and I've been proud to serve since. I was raised in Oceanside. I was lucky enough to stay here for college and then get hired at the Oceanside Police Department where I served in the neighborhood policing team and the gang units. Unfortunately, I was injured and forced to retire early, but now I have a chance to serve the city again. I have experience. I've spent my entire career in public service and leadership roles. I understand the challenges of the city, and I've been working hard to make changes and get things done. I'm going to continue to do that, and I'm proud of my bipartisan support, supported by the Oceanside Police Officers Association, the Oceanside Firefighters Association, the Chamber of Commerce, and former Mayor Jim Wood. I appreciate your vote. Thank you.
Thank you. Candidate Zernick.
Yeah, hi. My name is Dave Zernick. I'm a civil engineer with 27 years of working experience. I'm a single dad raising two teenage boys, and I've got a lady friend, Deborah Schiffer. I'm a graduate from San Diego State, and I love ocean sports, and I work very hard on behalf of my customers. I'm mostly involved in small projects, including room additions and residential custom homes. I believe the city is heading in the wrong direction, and the city has been run by the same group of old leaders for many, many decades. And I believe the city can do better for its citizens, and it's time for change.
Thank you. Now we'll go to the candidates from District 4. Candidate Gomez.
Good evening, everyone. I'm Michelle Gomez, and I'm a candidate for Oceanside City Council, District 4. I'm a Southern California native who has called Oceanside home for approximately 13 years. I'm a public servant who's been in the trenches for nearly two decades, working to make a difference in the lives of underserved individuals from all walks of life, including women, communities of color, veterans, military families, and trauma survivors. I've been in the fight to end human trafficking, resolve homelessness, stop domestic violence, and prevent elder abuse. I build a solid professional reputation in regulatory compliance, corporate ethics, and legislative analysis, drafting and implementing effective international policy which protects businesses, employees, and consumers. Now I'm looking to apply my experience to make a lasting difference here in Oceanside. I seek to put the voices of our working families ahead of petty and divisive politicking and to act on long overdue initiatives which will protect our Oceanside's future. My name is Michelle Gomez, and I look forward to having a very productive conversation this evening. Thank you.
Thank you. Candidate Weiss.
Hi, my name is Peter Weiss, and I'm currently the mayor of the city of Oceanside. I was not elected the mayor. I was appointed when former Mayor Wood resigned his position due to health reasons. In fact, former Mayor Wood actually recommended me for the position. A civil engineer by training, I have decades of experience as a leader in our city. I was the city engineer, the public works director, and spent almost seven years as a city manager. So I'm quite familiar with all aspects of city government. My wife and I raised four children who all attended El Camino High School. And over the years, I've been active in Boy Scouts and various youth sports programs, and I'm still active in the community as a coach for an inline hockey league. I want to make sure the council continues the progress that we have made over the past few years. And I know that I have the skills, experience, and unique qualifications to make sure that happens. Thank you.
Thank you. Candidate Marshall.
Evening, everyone. My name is Jane Marshall, and I'm a 30-year resident of District 4. Many of you know me. I've lived here a long time, been working with you at school events and all kinds of community activities. I am running for District 4 City Council because I too want to bring a better change to the community, especially for District 4, the first time that we have an opportunity to have our own representative. And we need someone that knows the community, that the community trusts, that I don't have any kind of baggage to bring, or I'm not a bureaucrat. I'm only working for the residents. All of my contributions come from individuals, the residents and citizens, and very little from One PAC versus my opponents, which primarily their donations are coming from special interests. So if you want positive change on city council with a professional that's well-qualified with real-world experience, vote for Jane Marshall for District 4 City Council. Thank you.
Thank you for those opening statements, candidates. Let's dive right into these questions from your constituents, and there's no reason to start with an easy one. The first question, do you support Black Lives Matter? Why? Candidate Bachelor.
I do. I do. I have participated in some of the walks, and I am a staunch advocate of racial justice. And right now, Black Lives Matter, while it is not a formal organization, is the voice of that rallying call. This is tricky times, right? Because the police jobs are very difficult, and the way that they're structured probably needs to be looked at to see if there's ways that we can do better. But the short answer to, do I support Black Lives Matter? I do, because we've got a racial injustice problem. And I'm not so arrogant as to tell you that I have all the answers, but I can tell you that I am more than happy to spend my energy looking for those answers. Thanks.
Candidate Davis.
Well, I embody Black Lives Matter, and it would be quite interesting to see if bringing more social equity on the council, maybe some of my fellow candidates can just drop out and let me do that if you support Black Lives Matter, just saying. Black Lives Matter, as far as it's a movement or such, I think there's a lot of lip service to it. I don't think that people really want to see the current leadership give up control. I think that in my case, as I said before, I'm the outreach coordinator. It's fine for me to serve. It's fine for me to bring artwork and go around and do all these kinds of things. I've been completely immersed in the community. But it's going to take your vote to give me a seat at the table because of powers that be. They would rather keep me in the position that I'm currently in instead of allowing me to really vote on the policies and the issues that can help bring more of a broader and fuller perspective to our city. Thank you.
Candidate Macken.
Thank you. Yes, I support Black Lives Matter. Absolutely. I believe we can do better. I believe one way that we can work towards equity and social justice would be the hiring of a new police chief. I believe the current process, which seems sort of like a done deal, is inadequate, to say the least, and that we need a very open process. Our community's begging for this process where the community comes together and works to select our police chief. And I'm looking forward to that. I hope it happens after the election rather than before. And again, I don't think it's suffice to request a survey from the community. There needs to be a committee, a very open, open process, and I think that will get us started. Thank you.
Candidate Keim.
Of course, I'm happy to support the Black Lives Matter movement. I think we can do much more to make sure we have equality. We may have a more diverse Oceanside. You know, the Black Lives Matter organization, though I have heard some concerning things about violence towards police officers, I do not know that or those. But as far as equality and Black Lives Matter, that movement, yes.
Candidate Zernick.
I do support the Black Lives Matter, and I think OPD is doing a pretty good job. But I would like to see some changes where the police officers are, that it's really clear that they're there to serve the public, and that there's an abundance of respect to the citizens, you know, regardless of their race and their background and their history. And of course, if an officer is negligent, we need to hold the police accountable if those things are happening. I think overall, we're not seeing a lot of those things happening in Oceanside. So I think we're really blessed to have that situation going.
Candidate Newman.
Yes, of course, I support Black Lives Matter. I think it's a difficult conversation for some to have, but it's 2020. I mean, the fact that we still have Black Lives fearing for their safety is completely outrageous. I think that OPD is a fine organization. I like OPD. I would not like to see them defunded or go away. But I do think that there are things that we can improve on. And as was mentioned earlier, the chief of police, the hiring process, it can't just be internal. This can't be a done deal. This needs to be an open field, a nationwide search. It needs citizen input. We need to have also a citizen oversight committee to where, you know, if there are issues that are coming up, any allegations, any misdeeds, anybody feels wrong, they need a place to go. And, you know, going to the people that are being accused is not really the right environment. So we do also need to have a citizens committee where other citizens can come and bring their issues with. And, you know, we just got to make sure that we're really reaching out to the community to make sure that everybody feels involved.
Moving on to a new question. The Sierra Club and the Green New Deal promote urban density as a means of preventing climate change. Please explain in detail what you propose to implement in order to control climate change. Candidate Weiss, please respond.
Well, this did just recently adopt our Climate Action Plan, which has a whole number of goals and objectives in it to help reduce our overall greenhouse gas emissions. And those do include densification along our transit corridors. And I think we do need to focus on looking at additional densities along, not just the Sprinter and Coaster line, but also along our key transportation networks such as Mission Avenue, Oceanside Boulevard. I think a lot of those things will be helpful. I also think we need to be looking at internally what we can do as a city to reduce our overall greenhouse gas emissions, which would overall help looking at our fleet, looking at our buildings, and looking how we develop. So all of those things, I think, are included in that Climate Action Plan. And my focus is make sure that those goals and objectives that we've approved, we advance those and further their implementation.
Candidate Marshall.
Thank you. I think that with the Climate Action Plan that the city, I worked on it. It's okay. It's a good start, maybe, but it really needs to have more teeth to it. As well, you can have a plan, but if it sits on the shelf and isn't implemented, like for instance, keeping to rezone agricultural and open spaces instead of putting it in the areas along infrastructure and rail lines and traffic lines, then we're only creating greenhouse gases. So, I mean, really taking it off the shelf and implementing it, and what the council is not doing that by their actions. In addition, I believe in electrification of all buildings using solar and other forms of energy rather than fossil fuel creation. And I think between reducing vehicle miles traveled by having more density along areas that can be done with other forms of transportation, electrification, and then it's a great way to go.
Unmute, please. Sorry. I think Oceanside's Climate Action Plan is a good start, but we have a lot of room for growth. And I think that there's a lot that we should be doing to reduce our greenhouse gas emissions. You know, the state of California calls for clean energy by 2050, and I think that the city of Oceanside should really beef that up. We should be looking at doing everything we can to get cars off the road and to reduce our greenhouse gas emissions by 2035. And a lot of that's going to depend on getting cars off the road, and how do we do that? You know, with COVID and businesses and a lot of people working from home now, we have an opportunity to really try to get more cars off the road. But we also need to invest greater into our mass transit and work on making more walkable, bikeable communities.
The next question provides a little background first, so bear with me. According to the San Diego Hunger Coalition, more than 1 million San Diego County residents, including Oceanside residents, are currently experiencing food insecurity. In a hunger-free San Diego, anyone in need of food assistance can get it. If elected, what types of policies would you support and what actions would you take to create a hunger-free Oceanside? We'll start with Candidate Davis.
I would first empower the people and organizations that who are already doing the work. I would encourage the city to spread the wealth a bit more to encompass some of the smaller organizations that are doing the work. And I would ask our citizens to have the perspective of looking at this particular situation with care, more care than contempt. And organizations like Vanessa Graziano, who's out there, and what she does is she finds resources. We need to empower more people like her. We need to encourage our citizens to become more involved because this is not just going to be a policy thing for the city. This is going to be an us thing, and we all need to strategize how we can do a little bit more to help this particular situation by volunteering our services, by volunteering our time, by creating tiny homes, accessory dwelling units. We all have to work together to end this crisis. Thank you.
Candidate Macken.
Thank you very much. We have the Collaborative Kitchen that is zero-waste kitchen, and they did a heck of a job this year. Well, they have been for quite some time, since they opened, actually. And I know the city council approved a program where they were able to be funded to serve meals to people, and I commend that action. And one thing that really happened during COVID in the community, and it just warmed me, was to be able to see people like Jimmy Figaroa from, he's a community leader, and pulling people together to get in cars to take food to people. We're talking about Vanessa, as Kelly has said, she's been just a wonderful help to help feed the unsheltered. The schools kicked in. They opened up different venues for students to come get food for breakfast and lunch. I think Oceanside collaboratively did a great job, and I have to tell you, Lou Kerling at Cyclops Farms did a fantastic job.
Thank you. Candidate Keim.
This is such a relevant question with our recent, with the COVID pandemic. So when we, in March, when the kitchens started shutting down, I met with a large group of restaurant owners. And we were concerned about all that food going to waste, not sure what the new rules would be and how they could use it. So we reached out to Oceanside Kitchen Collaborative. We sat down with the restaurant owners, and we created this program really quickly to get food that might go to waste into the hands of food insecure families, seniors, others who might be shut in during the pandemic. We got this program up and running at the senior sitter. It's something I'm most proud of, you know, council so far. And everyone pitched in, worked together, and, you know, we just put out an enormous number of meals. And the way that worked is we collaborated with a lot of different organizations and individuals like Vanessa Graziano. And so we're able to provide these meals, so food that otherwise might be going to waste. And it did two things. You could put money back in the pocket of restaurants and also get food to people that otherwise would go unused.
Thank you. Thank you. Candidate Zernick.
Hey, this is a great question, and we don't want anyone hungry. You know, when other people are struggling, I feel kind of threatened. I feel like my success is related to everyone else's success, so I would feel richer if there weren't any poor people. So one of the problems with people that are hungry, if you give them money, a lot of times they'll go right and buy alcohol with that. So just handing out food money doesn't always work. So the best way to do this is to support Brother Benno's and other religious or nonreligious charity organizations that are already doing the work. So we got to really make sure that they're supported so that if someone is hungry, they can go to Brother Benno's or go to a place and obtain food free of charge. That's really the way to go.
Candidate Newman.
Clearly, food insecurity is something that has been an issue for quite some time, and it's been significantly highlighted as a result of COVID. I think it was a big wake-up call when the schools closed, and it was realized how many students were going to go hungry because they weren't in school and they weren't able to get that lunch. So what we definitely, and they stepped up. I got to tell you, organizations, absolutely. Oceanside Kitchen Collaborative is vital, partnering with Green Oceanside. You know, obviously, the city, I think, could stand to partner with a few more private or public-private partnerships with organizations that are already working in this area. But we've been off to a good start, and we've got a large base. I think that it goes without saying that I think our community really has stepped up. We just need to make sure that they stay motivated. And I think that, I think Oceanside will. We always kind of look out for each other. But yeah, we need the city to be involved in those types of things, to be able to kind of help provide funding where it's needed, delivery service where they're needed. Okay.
Candidate Bachelor.
Yes, thank you for the question. I think if COVID has taught us one thing is that as a community, when we're called to action and it's urgent and it's serious, we respond. I think the city has done a terrific job at responding to this crisis. And what it tells me is that, given the right impetus and the right focus, COVID is going to go away. The financing that has come from outside sources like the federal government is going to go away. So we need to be taking that same urgency and looking at how do we prop up OKC? How do we prop up and expand the senior services and their meal delivery programs? We've got a waiting list on Meals for Wheels that is 75 people deep. How do we help them? You will find if you talk to these agencies that they all have their own challenges, but there is no intercommunication between them. And where one person has a surplus, somebody else has a need, and they're not talking. So I would love to see a committee put together that becomes a central communication point to understanding all of these elements to make sure that we're helping push the right services.
In case folks who are watching the tape wonder, when the stop sign goes up, I try to let the candidates finish their last sentence, and then I politely say thank you. And I have to say, this group's been really good about not running over, so thank you, candidates. The next question really asks about the coastline. Will you support a managed retreat of our coast? Or will you continue to ask taxpayers to pay to protect expensive homes from the inevitable sea level rise? Candidate Marshall.
Well, I don't, it's an interesting question, very pertinent. The beach is a big deal for Oceanside. It really... It really drives a lot of our TOT tax revenues. So having a beach is an important element of Oceanside's revenue. With that, we have a regenerative nourishment program that comes and goes, quite frankly. And I think that really what needs to be done is to work with Camp Pendleton and the Army Corps of Engineers who created the harbor that causes this where it blocks the flow of sand that goes down the coastline, to come up with a viable plan to allow Oceanside to continue to get the sand that it needs seasonally like it would normally, whether it's a bypass system or or not. Do we need to spend some money on the beach to get money? I think we do. So the matter is how much money versus how much loss.
Candidate Gomez.
The question was really about managed retreat. And as a coastal city, we're required by the state to plan for sea level rise. And managed retreat is one of the strategies to mitigate the potentially disastrous effects. However, as your council member, I will thoroughly research other options first and will advocate for other options such as sand replenishment and structural reinforcements. We do have a situation where Camp Pendleton Harbor was built. And I think that we really need to go back to them and emphasize the fact that they need to come back in and really look at what they've done and how they can mitigate the damage that has been created based on the Camp Pendleton Harbor.
Candidate Weiss.
I do not support managed retreat. In fact, I do support sand replenishment and some form of retention if we can do that. The Congress authorized studies to be done because they acknowledge, formally acknowledged that the loss of sand on Oceanside is directly attributed to the construction of the boat basin on Camp Pendleton. Unfortunately, the Corps of Engineers over the last 20 years has not been able to complete very studies that would provide for federal participation. So the city is now in the process of doing some of those studies. And hopefully upon their completion, we will be able to get federal money to address what we need to do to keep keep our beaches replenished and and retained.
Let's bring the districts back together for a yes or no. Now, I know it's hard, but really you only have one opportunity here, one word to use. It's yes or no. If you're really, really uncomfortable with that, you can say pass. But I can tell you, experience says that your constituents really want to hear you take a stand. So the question is, if you accept any money or in-kind services for any purpose from a group, business, or individual, will you promise us that you will recuse yourself from voting on any issue that they bring before the council? Candidate Marshall.
Pathetically, yes.
Don't cheat, one word. Candidate Weiss. Candidate Gomez. I knew that was going to happen at some point in doing all these. I was, the dog was going to lose it, sorry about that. Candidate Zarnik.
I'm going to give the money to the Red Cross and no.
One word.
No, one word, no.
Thank you. Candidate Kim. Candidate Mackin.
Yes.
Candidate Davis.
I'm sorry, could you repeat the question?
Absolutely, I can. So yes or no, if you accept any money or in-kind services for any purpose from a group, business, or individual, will you promise us that you'll recuse yourself from voting on any issue that they bring before the council?
Yes.
Candidate Bachelor.
Yes.
Candidate Newman.
Yes.
Thank you all for that. We'll go back to the regular questions and answers. And we are on question five, another question about climate change. Do you agree that climate change is a pressing issue? And if so, what types of measures would you be willing to support to reduce the effects of climate change on public health? Candidate Mackin.
Okay, the second half was, I believe it's definitely real and it is a pressing pressing issue. What will I do to, excuse me, can you repeat that?
I'm happy to repeat it. I'll, I'll start from the beginning of it. Do you agree that climate change is a pressing issue? And if so, what types of measures would you be willing to support to reduce the effects of climate change on public health?
Thank you. Yes, again, it is a pressing pressing issue. And I would like to electrify a lot of our building, go to green housing, actually, to get rid of using natural gas and use electrical methods. Community choice is a good way to go as well. That'll help the taxpayers with our costs that we're incurring from using utilities. I would also like to see electrification of our city vehicles as well as stations for charging at the city that are easy to get to. I would like to see possibly an electric bus taking tourists from the transit center to wherever they need to go. There are many things that we can do easily that aren't going to cost us a whole lot. But a whole, going back to the building, it's very important that we make sure that we have green housing. Thank you.
Candidate Kim.
Yes, it's an issue. You know, we started addressing it with the climate action plan. I think that's the first step. We can take further further steps going forward. I think CCE, our community choice energy, will be one of those steps. SDGNE has already indicated that they're going to be out of the energy procurement business. So it's going to be something we need to do anyways. But I think as we get more certain of what the impacts of climate change are going to be, then we'll know what other steps we need to take to make sure we don't have those disastrous effects that are predicted right now.
Candidate Zarnik.
Okay, the climate is very important. This is a big, huge issue. And there's a few things we can do to help. I mean, one big one is we just, each of us have to figure out a way to drive less. And the other thing is we got to figure out to not be so wasteful of all the resources and use less electricity. I mean, there's some easy things that we can all do that that work, like, you know, using LED bulbs. That's a no brainer. So we all got to do that. And hopefully just, you know, plant more trees and and just raise this consciousness. We've got to, you know, as technology progresses, we need to use that technology to improve our environment.
Candidate Newman.
Climate change is absolutely real and it's very pressing. It's pressing for everybody. What can we do? Obviously, community choice energy has already been said and that is very clear. We can get into that. We need green construction. We need to also retrofit where we can, bring in the use of more renewable resources, solar, water capture, and all things along those lines. We need to look at electric vehicles when it comes to our city's fleet cars. We need to encourage our transit district to also incorporate greener technology in their fleet vehicles. We need to reduce the miles that people have to drive, bringing neighborhood services like grocery stores and things like that closer inside the neighborhoods, making them more walkable so people don't need to get into their cars. There's any number of things like that that we can look at. And we need to look at every single possibility very closely. We need to act, this is beyond climate action, we need climate stabilization at this point.
Candidate Bachelor.
Thank you for the question. Of course, it's it's a problem. So we could talk for way more than a minute about all the things that can be done, but let me just focus on solar and electrify, solar and electrify. That is our path, easiest path to getting the most bang for our buck. I would love to see the city putting in capital assets to have solar-generated charging stations for electric cars. This becomes an incentive for our citizens to buy electric vehicles because in essence, their gasoline is free. They can go to one of these service centers that are provided by the city. They can plug in their car, they can charge up. It's a capital expense, it's not a recurring expense, so it's something that can be done within the budget of the city. Those are the types of things, the community, the the action plan that's been put together has some great strides, and I wish I had more time. I would talk your ear off, thanks so much.
Candidate Davis.
Yes, climate, it's very real, global warming and all of that. If you log onto our YouTube page, Series 3, Reduce, Use, and Recycle, I identified a couple of grant opportunities through Valerie Grant. And so, yes, I think we should continue to identify funding. I think that I'm most interested in the environmental justice part of the plan, that as we move forward, that we keep in mind the community and the community members that could be affected by any of the changes that we'd like to make. I know that the city has already adopted certain ordinances for renewable energy, the charging stations, which was one of the grants that Valerie helped us identify. So I will continue to do the work that I'm already doing as your council member. Thank you.
Proposition L is on the ballot for Oceanside. Briefly, it asks voters to weigh in on the rezoning of agricultural land to a planned development known as North River Farms. Do you support Prop L? Candidate Gomez.
You know, I've dedicated myself to fighting sprawl and promoting smart growth for years. And this particular project is extremely controversial. And I'm grateful that each voting resident will be afforded the opportunity for their voices to be heard on the matter. And I really commend the group that went out and gathered the signatures to get this on the ballot. I live approximately one mile from the proposed site and I have great concerns about traffic and I'm troubled about the lack of affordable housing. I believe that we need housing across all income levels within our city. And it's critically important to me that very low and low-income housing is equitably distributed throughout our city. We don't need enclaves of rich and wealthy, and we also don't need areas that are primarily low income. Ensuring that we have communities that have income levels across all spectrums is absolutely critical, and it's for the betterment of all of our residents.
Candidate Marshall.
Can you repeat the question, please?
Yes. Briefly, it asks, do you support or oppose Proposition L, which is the one we know as the North River Farms?
I support no on L, no on L. We do not need sprawl development out in agricultural lands to rezone them for a planned development matrix. I helped get signatures and we did not forge any signatures, Mr. Weiss. They were all genuine, as proven twice. And it will allow us to put the kinds of housing that we need in the higher density areas in the affordable range to support our RENA, Regional Housing Needs Assessment, criteria. As it stands right now, our council is not paying attention to the state mandates, whether it's greenhouse gases or affordable housing or any of the criteria that we need to do. And they're just rezoning things for the people that have given them donations. I won't do that.
We have another question about the measures. Measure M asks the voters to decide if the city of Oceanside should establish a cannabis business tax to fund general city services, including enforcement issues. Candidate Kim.
I generally don't like additional taxes, but for this, to pay for additional services and any unintended consequences for the legalization of marijuana as we go through it, I do support M.
Candidate Zarnik.
Okay, this is, this is a great question. And, you know, I don't want to be a parrot and copy other people, but read my lips. No new taxes, you know, we just had a half cent sales tax increase. We just had the water bills going up. We just had another fee and another cost go up. And so as a citizen, I think the city is sending out this more money message constantly, and I'm really opposed to that. I want to figure out a way to cut costs and and lower the water bill and lower the fees and lower the taxes. So just because someone is maybe in a cannabis business or a business, you know, to me, if a person would like to start a business, regardless of what it is, if it's legal, let's do it. Let's support them, let's help them, you know, get a business going, not tax them and and create problems for them. So.
Candidate Newman.
As a longtime cannabis advocate, I can say that I am 100% opposed to Measure M. It is excessive. They talk about 6% on retail, but they don't really talk about that it's also 6% on manufacturing and 6% on distribution and another 3.5% on cultivation. By the time you follow this, the consumer is looking at a tax of anywhere between about 15 and 27% on top of the 23% that the state puts on it. It's obscene. We're limited to a medical only market, which means it's going to be medical patients that are paying this tax. And in this position, instead of COVID, in where we need to really look at budgets and increasing our revenue, now is not the time to be discouraging and hurting a potential new industry. We need to be supporting and encouraging and helping. So, yeah, I I urge everybody, vote no on Measure M. Thank you.
Candidate Bachelor.
Thank you. And if anybody is an expert in this area, it's Amber. She's been at this a long time. And I have concerns that are slightly aligned with David's and also with Amber's. And part of this whole process of legalization, while I want to walk before we run and I want to be careful about where we put them, part of this process is to decriminalize it and get it out of the sort of gray or black market. And if we have layers of taxes that make this at 30% more than what somebody can buy it from their neighbors or on the street, they're simply going to go buy it elsewhere. And we are not going to reach the goal of sort of trying to stabilize this so that we can control it in a way that we can monitor it, et cetera. We're going to need the money, but we don't need the money in such a way that we damage the end goal. So this is tricky. I would vote no on it. I think it's a, it's got the right spirit, but I think it's it's fatally flawed.
Candidate Davis.
I'm voting no on the measure and really about the people who use cannabis for for health reasons and to tax them on their medication and such. I'm not, I'm not a fan of that. But if you will indulge me, I want to also use the rest of my my time just to say this about Black Lives Matter. Much as I'm in this election to win it, it's also about educating the public. And it's not just about police killing and lynching of black men. It's the perspective, it's the kind of attitude that comes with that. And the violence, to speak about the violence that this movement has has made is just so inaccurate. And many of the violence that has come have come from the white supremacists. So I just wanted to use the rest of my time to say, it's not just about that, the police brutality. It's about the attitudes that formulate the actions is why the movement is in place. Thank you.
Candidate Mackin.
I I went completely off and came back on. Are we still talking about Measure M?
Yes.
Okay, Kelly, shame on you. You pulled a quick one on me. Thank you. Yes, I do support the tax. The last thing I want to be is the cheapest place to buy marijuana. As we know, and as a teacher, I've experienced, I've worked with students in high-risk groups, and I do know alcohol, tobacco, there are consequences to to those uses. And I believe that the funding will help to provide programs to keep our kids in safe places and education about the use of marijuana. And medical pay, medical marijuana is not taxed, so I don't see that being a problem for people who have a medical need. I believe it's the recreational use. It's illegal to charge tax on the state of California on medical marijuana. Thank you.
Unbelievably, we're running out of time, so this is going to be our last question. The city of Oceanside has police and fire commission. However, the scope of this commission does not include investigating complaints against personnel. Would you support the establishment of an independent community oversight board with investigatory powers? Candidate Marshall.
Yes, I would definitely support that because I think more transparency is better than less transparency. More community involvement is better than less community involvement. One of the reasons that I'm running is because there is a lack of trust, a lack of transparency, and citizens are not happy with the status quo. More bureaucrats and more transparent, more lack of transparency and even ethics as far as recusing and things of that nature need to be implemented, not necessarily creating a policy, but necessarily making sure that all people are accountable to the voters, the citizens of Oceanside. We are public servants and we need to remember that. We are public servants, and we need to remember that.
Candidate Weiss.
I would not support creating a new committee or commission that would have investigatory powers. One reason is the Police Officer Bill of Rights would significantly restrict what they cannot do. However, I would support the Police and Fire Commission having an expanded role where they would be able to look at and review use-of-force incidents.
Candidate Gomez.
First, I'm grateful that the city of Oceanside has its own police department and that we're not relying on the county sheriff's department. I think that's really important for residents to remember. You know, we really need to focus on striving to improve community and police relations, and trust and accountability and transparency between the community and our police officers is critical. I do, however, agree with Mr. Weiss. I think that it's important that we utilize the commission that we currently have and give them powers to look into things of racial discrimination and those types of situations. I don't think we should create a commission simply for the sake of creating a commission. I think we need to empower the commission that we already have. And I think we can do that by working together with our police officers, with our police department and our community, as well as our local leaders, to find the balance.
Thank you so much. Before we get to the closing statements, let me remind everyone that the last day to register to vote is October 19. If you've moved, changed your name, or want to change your party affiliation, you need to update your registration before October 19. It's really easy to do. You can do it online at sdvote.com. That's the San Diego County Register of Voters' official website. If you're watching this on October 20th, don't fret. You can still file a provisional ballot up through Election Day, November 3, with that Register of Voters. Remember, it's really easy and secure and convenient to vote by mail. Everyone this year is getting a mail-in ballot, but if you want to track the process, it's really easy to do. That sdvote.com site has a really cool new feature this year called "Track My Ballot". You'll know exactly where it is, and you'll have confidence that it has been counted. Now, if you're looking for more information and your questions didn't get answered tonight, we encourage you to go to the nonpartisan website called voterseedge.org. It will give you your specific ballot information. It's all nonpartisan information about the candidates and the ballot measures. It's also a great place to see who's contributing to what ballots and what candidates, so you know where the money's coming from. The League of Women Voters do the hands-on work to empower voters and to defend democracy. We never endorse a candidate, but we do work directly to help shape important issues in our communities. If you'd like to join the work of the men and women of the League, we'd love to have you. It's really easy to join. Our website is l w v n c s d dot org. That's for Legal Women Voters, North County, San Diego. And follow us on Facebook, Instagram, and Twitter. Now, let's have the candidates do their closing statements of one minute. We're going to do them in reverse order, so we'll start with Candidate Marshall. Oh, I'm sorry. I said that wrong. I made it all through without making a mistake. We're going to do District 3 first, which means we start with Candidate Zernick.
Thank you so much for the chance to speak at the debate here. There's not a lot of time, so just very quickly, we need to open the schools for the kids. We've got to do more to help the homeless. The city's infrastructure under the current system is deteriorating. We've got to do more to do that. We need to be clear that the city employees are being very respectful to our citizens and helping our citizens at every turn, and then do more to lower taxes and fees on people. And then, lastly, the city needs to really make an effort to be pro-business and help people succeed, help people with their business, and just bend over backward and provide the service and be very customer-oriented to make those businesses succeed.
Candidate Khan.
We are going through some of the toughest times in recent memory right now. That's why it is more important than ever to have steady, reliable, and experienced leaders. And that's what I am proud to bring to the table. I have been with the city for almost 15 years in different roles, or with management at the sheriff's department. I've handled almost every critical incident there is. I understand how the city works. I understand what we need to do. I have relationships from the state, federal, and local levels that I've been building for years, and I will use all of those to get us through this time and take very important steps the next few years to improve our city. I'm going to address some of our major challenges and just make Oceanside the most livable beach city in California. I'd appreciate your support.
Candidate Macken.
Thank you. I come before you as your neighbor, one who has not taken and will not take developer or special interest contributions. My focus is on you and our neighborhoods, and I have a proven record of voting that way. We have some particularly challenging times ahead for our city, and we need council members who will not cave into special interests, rather toe the line for residents to ensure programs are available for our most needy population. Our parks remain in public hands, and our beaches are sandy and accessible to the public. Just imagine, no more long nights at council meetings begging the council to listen to you. No more developers appealing planning commission decisions to the council to get their way. Imagine El Corazon dedicated parkland and protected from developers changing the plans. Imagine really building affordable housing in Oceanside to serve those who grew up here and want to live here. Imagine our quaint beachside character, protected and preserved. I ask for your vote for City Council, District 3. Thank you.
Candidate Davis.
My name is Kelly Davis, and I have been part of high-performance teams and award-winning projects. What the Oceanside Council needs are fresh, innovative ideas, because there has never been a time like this. And because of the time that's involved, and only get a minute, I'd like you to go to the Nonpartisan Voters Edge site, and I put a couple videos on there that has demonstrated my priorities and how I have been meeting them as I have been campaigning. We have the Jackie story that talks about economic development and growth. We have the eco-friendly initiatives that are already mentioned. You can go onto our YouTube account to see that. And we have our public service, reimagining public services with our "de-stressing the police". That's a fun one. So again, my name is Kelly Davis, and let's imagine a brighter future for Oceanside that's bringing more social equity to the council, and I respectfully ask for your vote. Thank you.
Candidate Bachelor.
Thank you. I'm a centrist. I've had known people for years that I've done business with, and when I finally ran, the number-one question I would get was, "Are you a Democrat or a Republican?" And the fact that they didn't know told you about something. There are things on the left that I'm highly, highly passionate about, and there are some things on the right that I completely agree with, and people have a hard time figuring me out. Interesting byproduct of that is my digital marketing team has shown 11% is where I'm standing right now, and that's not a winning strategy. And this district is very important. And so tonight, I'm going to endorse two other candidates, Ryan Kim and Amber Newman. So if you are a supporter of mine, and you have a tendency to be moderate or fall on the conservative side of the spectrum, Ryan is a good place for you to take a good look. If you fall on the more progressive side, Amber is a good place to take a look. These are no-drama people that aren't going to bring arguments to city council. They are good people. They are thoughtful people, and I want to wish them both the very best in this election. Thanks.
And I have to thank Candidate Bachelor, because I've been doing this a long time, and it's the first time I've ever got breaking news. So thank you for that. Candidate Newman.
Well, I think my closing just changed. Thank you very much, Bill, for your confidence. I really appreciate that. That means a lot. I have come to admire you, and I really do appreciate that. One other thing that I didn't plan on bringing up here is just to rebut something on Measure M, just because I think it's important. Facts matter. It is not illegal to tax medical cannabis measuring places a tax on both medical and adult use, should Oceanside allow adult use in the future. It also includes taxing hemp-based CBD products. So again, please vote no on M. A lot has happened in the last 20 years, and to say nothing of the last 20 weeks. As a local business operator whose business has been significantly impacted by the COVID restrictions, I can tell you with absolute certainty that business-as-usual just isn't going to cut it. We need people who recognize that COVID isn't over, and it won't be for quite some time. We need someone who knows that many of our small businesses are not okay. They're not thriving. They're not doing well. They need to know that they're watching for the daily county health updates with such anxiety, knowing that we're still teetering on the edge of the purple "shut down everything" tier. You know, that person is me.
Thank you. Candidate Marshall.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Jane Marshall, and I am your 30-year District 4 resident, neighbor, friend. I don't bring controversy or baggage to this office, nor am I a bureaucrat for multiple years with the city. I am a face of change. I'm a very hard worker. I have built a business. I'm the president of my corporation for 18 years, and I'm a community advocate for the last 10 years, helping to solve real problems, traffic, safety, even making sure that our treasurer and clerk were state-elected rather than appointed. My contributions come from residents and citizens, not special interests. Over 90%, unlike my opponents, where 90% come from special interests and developers. So if you want positive change from a neighbor you can trust, vote for Jane, Jane Marshall, for District 4 Council. Have a good night.
Candidate Weiss.
Hi, my name's Peter Weiss, and I bring a sensible and balanced approach to issues and understand that compromise is necessary to improve the quality of life for all. The local level is no place for extreme positions. We need to be able to work together and develop a team atmosphere where we can collectively advance Oceanside. I'm committed to maintaining stability in the positive investment environment that we've created over the last few years so we can enhance the programs and services we provide to the community. If you recognize the prosperity we have created, enjoy the new businesses and jobs we've created, and you want someone on the city council who will continue that effort, then I'm your person.
Thank you. That includes the presentations tonight. On behalf of the Oceanside Public Library...
Wait.
Oh, my gosh. Michelle, I'm so worried about staying on time.